So again, thank you for coming. We'll start with our agenda. Item D, approval of minutes, February ninth and March second, 2023. Item E, acknowledgement and acceptance of financial reports and budget transfers as printed. And item F, communications to the Board of Education. A communication was received from Kristen Cusimano, Gina Deignan, Marilyn Rich, and Nancy and Joe Fucarino. Can I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And item G is our superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to Mr. McNamara.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for attending tonight. I'm John McNamara, Superintendent of Schools. And I would always like to start off some good news, which we have. We received word just this week that our middle school is being recognized by New York State as an essential element school to watch. This is quite an honor for our middle school. Our, our, our middle school staff has really done a phenomenal job over the past couple of years to work towards this goal. They, it's a, it's a lengthy process that they've participated in that culminated a couple of weeks ago with a, a visit from the representatives from the state to come and really and see us in action. And they were thoroughly impressed with, with the job that our, our faculty and staff and our administrative team does at, at Wantaw Middle School. So we're going to do a, we just got this news, so this is kind of breaking news, which is exciting. And we're going to do a formal recognition of this accomplishment at our next board meeting on April fourth, where we'll do a formal presentation about, about the work that they did. Mr. Chiffo and, and Mrs. Quatrochi did a nice job just a few months ago updating the board on all the, all that went into this process. So we'll, we'll certainly celebrate this outstanding achievement. I thank our building leadership team. They, this is initiative they, they jumped into a couple of years ago and, and, and really just did a heck of a job facilitating this and, and leading this process for, for our middle school. So I, I congratulate them. They are going to be in, in Washington DC at the end of June. I think it's June twenty-second, where they'll be formally recognized and, and there's a gala to celebrate the accomplishment. They are, right now, there's only thirteen other middle schools on Long Island that have received this designation. So it's, it's quite an accomplishment. It's a program that dates back to about two thousand and six. So, so once again, amazing accomplishment. We're thrilled and congratulations. And Mr. Chiffo, Mrs. Quatrochi are here tonight, so congratulations to them. And we, we look forward to a continued celebration, so. We also, in a few moments, the board's going to be accepting a retirement, so I wanted to formally congratulate one of our math teachers currently at, at Wantaw Middle School, and that's Sue Martin. Sue is here this evening with her husband, Jim. Her, her daughter is here, Ashley as well, and Edith, her mom. So welcome to all of you this evening and thank you for attending tonight. Sue is, is wrapping up twenty-nine years of service here at, at, at the Wantaw School District and thirty-three years as an educator, and certainly quite a career. She received her bachelor's degree from SUNY Onyanta, master's degree from LIU Post. Before joining us here in Wantaw, she worked as a second grade teacher in the Plainview Old Bethpage School District, something I learned Sue and I have in common. We both worked in the Plainview Old Bethpage School District. Not at the same time, but both worked there. And that, she worked briefly over at Massapequa as, as well. Joined us initially as a part-time teacher and then quickly became a full-time teacher a few months later and has been here ever since. And Sue has spent the bulk of her career right here at Wantaw High School, teaching a wide array of, of, of math classes. And certainly, one of her strengths, just the diversity of which the content knowledge that she has and able to really teach a number of courses here. Over the past year, she's worked here at Wantaw Middle School, providing support for our math students. And also has served as a leader here in the district with the WUT, our teachers' union, where she held leadership roles for, for quite some time as well. I know it was a difficult decision for Sue to retire, and I, I just want to thank her for her dedicated service to the district. I wish her all the best in the next chapter of her life. So congratulations to Sue Martin. All right, then just lastly tonight for my report, I just wanted to provide an update to the, the board for, in terms of our budget development process. We began the process, you know, way back in, in the fall to build a budget for this upcoming school year. We've held one budget forum to date. That was a couple of weeks ago. And we have several others that are, that are upcoming as well, so we certainly invite the community to participate in those. We also have a budget survey that went out to the community. I thank the members of the community that already completed that. That's right on our district website, so if you'd like to complete that, that's right there. We emailed that out a, a couple of weeks ago as well. We also have a, a series of, of budget focus groups that we do, so we invite folks to participate in those. We're running three sessions right now towards the end of this month. And those are just small group conversations that we have about the budget. We, it's myself and, and Mr. Sedron, and we just do a very brief overview of the budget and then really it's a conversation about any, any concerns folks may have or questions they may have about the budget. So, and those we do virtually, so just to make it convenient for folks. And like I said, they're small group conversations, so we invite you to participate in those as well. Here are the, the presentations that we'll be doing about the budget. You can see the first one that we completed a couple of weeks ago. The next one is this coming Monday. We will have, this coming Monday, draft two of the, version two of our budget ready for, for the community. We're still currently working off of presentation, budget number one, and that, that's what I'll share with you tonight. And that really kind of represents where we were a couple of weeks ago. We've been working our way at it and have made some good progress and continue to work towards getting below our tax cap. And then we have two other presentations. April third is also an evening presentation, and then April fourth, we do a daytime presentation as well, for those that can't make an evening presentation. All of our presentations in the evening take place here at Wantaw High School. They're right in the cafeteria. And the daytime presentation we do at the Wantaw Public Library, so hopefully you can join us for those as well. We also record all of those presentations and post them to the district website, so they're all available. Good news is, you know, we were able to accomplish much of what is listed here. These were all the goals that the board set for our budget for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. One was certainly continuing all of our existing programs, not, not taking any steps backwards. One of our big focus areas was to continue to reduce elementary class size, to get back to where we were prior to the two thousand and twenty-one school year, when, if you recall, we had a failed budget on the first vote. We had to increase some class sizes there, so we're getting back to, to those levels prior to twenty-one. Continued to expand universal pre-K. We've been fortunate to receive some New York State funding for UPK. We had, a couple of years ago, had four UPK classes that ran here in the district, and we expanded that to six this current year. And we are hopeful if this current proposal from New York State holds, that we're going to be able to expand that to eight classes for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. And that is all from funding that we're receiving directly from New York State. It's a grant that can be used solely for that purpose. And this year, for the past couple of years, we've done a lottery for our four-year-olds to enter that program, and we had about a hundred and forty people put in for the lottery this year. I think it was about a hundred and forty-eight. And we're going to be able to cover almost everybody if that, you know, funding holds up. So we've really let folks know for the first six classes if they've been able to get in there, and, and, and we're waiting to see what the final budget proposal looks like that we get in the beginning of April. Also had some new course offerings. We'll, we'll highlight a couple of those this evening. Technology, we've really focused on cybersecurity over the past couple of years and are going to continue to expand some of those efforts next year. District facilities, I'll highlight a couple of projects that are being proposed. There's actually two propositions that we're going to be asking the community to vote on in May. One is for our budget and the other one is for an expenditure out of our capital reserve fund. That's a fund that's designated to do capital improvements, and part of our overall capital improvement plan was to use some of that funding. So we have a number of projects that we're proposing come out of there. Infrastructure work for some roofing work and some masonry work and others that I'll highlight for you. Also, continue our efforts in the area of security and ongoing professional development for our staff. Positive financial news, we're receiving an increase in foundation aid, which is terrific. It's going to be about two point six million dollars in increases there for, for next year. We have the approval on our bond ref, two of our, our three bond referendums, and that will really help facilitate so much of our capital improvements. We received really good news this year with our fiscal stress score, which is a great indicator for us in terms of improved financial condition. And then also really looking to reestablish, you know, some of our programs that were reduced in previous years, so that, this will allow us to do that as well. Current tax cap is two point five seven percent. We're currently over that. We've made some good progress since that number, and we're continuing to work towards that. We anticipate being below that tax cap by, by our, our next forum. As I said, we've made good progress over the past two weeks. We started out about a million dollars over that gap, and we're continuing to work at that. We're certainly hopeful on Monday to present something that is below the cap. UPK, I mentioned, hopefully be able to expand that to our eight classes. You can see the New York State funding that's associated with that. We have almost, we have more than doubled our funding in that area over the past couple of years, which is great, and look to continue to expand that program. Class sizes, you can see where we currently stand and, and what we hope to reduce that to, you know, getting back to, you know, the twenty-sixes and twenty-fours where we were before. Also, you know, we'll, we'll look to share what those actuals look like. Our actuals are actually coming in below that, which is, is fantastic as well. New course offerings, these are some of the new courses that were proposed by the high school and middle school staff. Continue to expand our elective programs there that we're working towards as well. Some of the security enhancements, looking to expand our additional, additional security personnel, expanded hours there. Exterior door replacements is part of our security initiative as well. We're replacing some of our, our technology in, in this area and looking to move towards a, an ID badge system as well at the secondary complexes. Capital improvements, there's a number of them. These are going to be part of our capital reserve and also through our budget. One big project is going to be in the area of roof replacements at Wantaw L and, and doing some roof work here at the, at Wantaw High School. Our athletic field scoreboard here at the high school is on its last legs in terms of functionality, so we're looking to replace that as part of the capital, our capital projects as well. We also have the door replacements I mentioned, some HVAC work in the high school gym. Last year, the capital, out of the capital reserve, voters approved some work in the gym to redo our ceiling there, the windows there. All those projects have been submitted to SED and that work will take place this summer. Some masonry work across the district and then some hallway ceiling replacements at Wantaw Middle School as well. This is the proposition for the capital reserve. In total, we have about three million dollars in expenses coming out of our capital reserve. That money is currently in our reserve and we're asking for the authority from the voters to spend that money for those capital improvements. These are our big drivers in the budget. You can see, one of the biggest challenges that we continue to have is health insurance. Health insurance, are, are, those rates continue to climb. Over the past two years, we've had a twenty-seven percent increase in health insurance premiums, and those are significant dollars for us. We're looking at a one point six million dollar increase in our budget as a result of those increased employer contributions. And we have a number of special education costs as well. That budget's going up by about nine hundred thousand dollars. So those two items alone are really impacting our, 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 uh, foundation aid that, that we're seeing increase, they're, they're really eating up the majority of that. I can see some of the other areas are negotiated salary increases. ERS is the employer, employee rather, retirement system. We're seeing some increases there. And then tech, transportation, some increase in cost there as well. This is the good news, New York State aid increases that I mentioned earlier. We're waiting final, that was in the governor's proposal. Right now, the New York State budget is with the Senate and the Assembly. They just submitted some of their items in their one-house bill, and we're reviewing that. Typically, you know, the, the state budget is approved by the beginning of April, so once we have those final numbers, we'll know exactly what it looks like for next year and we can, you know, build our final budget. Summary, we're certainly looking to advance some areas in terms of capital improvements, maintain all of our existing programs, and, and, and this budget really is able to accomplish both of those, those goals. I mentioned our focus groups. You can sign up for those right on our main page of our, our website, so please feel free to, to join us for those, as well as surveys. Those survey links are, are right there on the main page of our district website as well. We continue to update our budget information page. All of the slides that we do and all of these presentations are there. All of the resources for our budget are there. Mr. Sedron regularly updates that after each one of our presentations, so we'll continue to post our resources there and continue to look for those. Budget vote will take place on Tuesday, May sixteenth, and that will be at our three elementary schools, as it, as it typically is. And with that, that ends my report, so I'm going to turn it back over to the board unless you have any questions regarding our budget presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. McNamara.
Great, thank you.
Before I move on, I just wanted to, on behalf of the board, congratulate Mr. Chiffo and Ms. Quatrochi on this amazing accomplishment. I, along with Adam and Jen, were able to sit with the two gentlemen who came for their site interviews. And after leaving that, that meeting, I had no doubt you were going to get this designation. They didn't do a very good job of hiding how impressed they were with the, both of you and all the work that you've done, that you have done, along with the teachers and staff. And they were super impressed, and it was just, it was nice to see how, how enthusiastic they were about our programs, from academics to the new game room in the middle school cafeteria. So kudos to you guys, and we look forward to more great things to come. So thank you very much. Okay, so moving along with our agenda tonight. Item H, Report of the Administration. Item H1, Personnel Actions Instructional Staff. H1A, Retirement. A letter of resignation for the purpose of retirement has been received from a member of our teaching staff. We wish Susan Martin health and happiness in her retirement and thank her for many years of her dedications and service to the education of our children. Thank you very much, Mrs. Martin. Item B, Precision of Club and Extracurricular Appointments. C, Precision of Coaching Appointments. D, Sixth Instructional Class. E, Precision of a Seasonal Appointment. F, Appointment to Club Extracurricular Activities. G, Appointment to Coaching Activities. H, Appointment to Seasonal Activity. And I, Appointment Instructional Substitutes. Can I have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item H2, Personnel Actions Civil Service. Item H2A, Resignation. B, Change in Title. C, Appointment of Civil Service Personnel. And D, Terminations. Can I have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item H3, Contractual and Other Authorizations. Item H3A, Health Service Agreements. B, Consultant Services Agreements. C, Special Education Agreement. D, Athletic Trainer Support Agreement. And E, Facilities Use Agreement. Can I have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item H3F, the Wantaw Foundation for Educational Excellence Agreement. G, CBIZ Valuation Group LLC Agreement. H, Educational Data Services Skilled Traders Bid. I, Affordable Care Act, I'm sorry, Affordable Care Act Consultant Extension. J, General Painting Repairs and Maintenance Cooperative Bid. K, Nassau County Directors of School Facilities Purchasing Consortium. L, Extraclassroom Activity Charters. M, Capital Reserve Proposition. And N, Authorization for Legal Notice. Can I have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, Unfinished Business. There is none. Item J, New Business. J1, Approval of Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education Recommendations. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that ends our business section of the meeting. We will now move along to hear from our groups, starting with our student government. Sean and Nyla.
Good evening, everyone. Since we last met, the Warriors are still making headlines. Firstly, the Boys Varsity Basketball Team made its semifinals during their winter season, and they finished in the Nassau County Final Four for their division. The Varsity Cheer Team returned from Florida in mid-February, and they placed fifth in the nation for their division, which is pretty impressive. Battle of the Classes was held on March third, and for the second year in a row, Nyla and the juniors won with the sophomores coming in second, and both the freshmen and seniors tied for third, which is a bit embarrassing, but it's fine.
Additionally, the Wantaw High School Theater Department is heading to the Bikini Bottom with their rendition of SpongeBob SquarePants the Musical in the upcoming weeks. SpongeBob will be shown on March thirty-first, April first, and April second. Also, Sports Night will be held next Friday, March twenty-fourth. The black and gold teams have been working tirelessly to prepare their dances and events for this night. They are eager to showcase their talents and hard work. Furthermore, earlier this month, Mr. Keith Sachs organized an extensive, highly competitive volleyball tournament for any student to participate in. The tournament saw over thirty teams, and all proceeds were dedicated to funding for the baseball program. Moreover, spring sports went into full swing this Monday to prepare for the soon approaching season.
The high school has also been giving recognition to some of its scholars this past month. Students were inducted into both World Language Honor Society and National Business Honor Society to commemorate their hard work in elective classes. Similarly, the virtual enterprise class today had their very own trade show here at the high school. So businesses, or fake businesses from schools all over the island came down to sell and pitch their products to students here, and each student that visited the trade room got their own credit card and they went shopping to invest in each company.
Looking forward into April, student government and general organization will be rolling out our Initiative for Autism Acceptance Month. We are currently selling T-shirts to students and staff to spread awareness about the importance of acceptance. That's all that we have for you tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you both very much. Anyone from Foundation for Excellence, Educational Excellence, Barbara or Liz? I know that Summer Rec is going to be up and running again, so that's one thing to be on the lookout for. Forest Lake, Katie or Laura?
Hi, everybody. I'm Laura Grassi. I'm the PTA president at Forest Lake. The most exciting thing that we had happen this month is we were able to purchase a new sign for the front of Forest Lake, so if you haven't been by, please check it out. It's, looks great. So that went in last week. We had our variety show here last weekend. Everything went well. We had a little technical problem, but the show went on. That was great. We had our second book fair two weeks ago. We have one more book fair, BOGO. We raised over two thousand dollars in scholastic money for books back to the school, and we had an awesome assembly at the night session. Corey the Dribbler, he's a former Wizards player. So we had about fifty kids come to that. That was really exciting. We have one more assembly coming up, Kerboom Kids. We had it in the beginning of the school year. It was actually popular with the students and the staff, so they'll be coming back again. We have two joint fundraisers coming up with Mandalay in the next few months. We're partnering with them just to raise some money. We have also nominations went out for our executive board because we have a couple people vacating positions. My co-president, Katie Savage, will be leaving me, which I'm upset about. And then finally, we have the Wizards game April twenty-ninth that's coming up, so information just went out about that. So we're looking forward to the staff being involved with that as well, so, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry. I'm Danielle Tarabetia.
I'm Suzanne Dressler.
There's a lot of fun things going on at Mandalay. We started off our Part Month with a really successful book fair as well, and we raised about fifteen hundred dollars. It was so successful, we were able to give away posters and stuff to the students, and we were able to give books back to the classrooms to the teachers. And we also are planning a, we had an author visit, James Preller, and fun fact, he was from Wantaw, so the kids were really excited about that, and we, they purchased many books from him.
Coming up in the next few weeks, we have our maturity night for our fifth graders on Monday. We're working with Ms. Delpiano on a steam night on March thirtieth. We're really excited. We have a mad science bang-pop-boom assembly, and then there's going to be different stations that the kids can go to. I believe it's a three-D printer. There's propelling, self-propelled boats. Trying to think, I just signed up last night. Then April fourth, we have our Bubble Bonanza Assembly for all grades in our school. We're working on our Candyland Ball, which is coming up on April twenty-ninth. We have a really cute Candyland theme. It's going to be really fun. We just donated checkers and chess set to the Mandalay School for the outdoor recess to give the kids a little bit more of a activity-based outside experience. And our nominating committee forms actually went out two days ago, and there is a president position available if anybody wants it. I will be stepping down after three years. And then we have a lot of other vacancies as well, so please feel free to send in those nominating forms. Thank you so much.
Wantaw L PTA, Vinnie or Bridgette? Or anybody in there? Please? No? Septa, Trish or Liz?
Hi, everybody. I'm Sophia Stipinoff.
I'm Mary Beth Reynolds.
All right, so we're just going to give you some Septa news. Septa scholarships for graduating students are up online, and they are due Friday, March twenty-fourth. They are posted on our Facebook page and on the district's website as well. We have our big fundraiser coming up, which is Bingo Shenanigans with a comedian, Jen Snortlin, on Saturday, March twenty-fifth, from seven to ten at with a comedian Jen Snortland on Saturday, March 25th, from 7:00 to 10:00 at Seaman's Hall. Tickets are available to purchase on our member hub, and member hub information is also on our Facebook page. We'll be raffling off some gray baskets and a 50/50. You'll also be helping us raise funds for speakers, grants, and more scholarships for our students. Then save the date for Super Mario Brothers the Movie at the Bellmore Playhouse on April 17th at 6:00 PM. Oh, yes, we have...
We awarded...
We awarded two grants to two teachers. Ms. Smith to purchase a program to support speech services for our students. Another grant for Mrs. Ward to purchase materials for her living environment class.
Yeah, and we're also going to be pairing or collaborating with Mandalay at their Candy Land Dance on April 21st.
Yep.
We're going to be providing a quiet space for the children to enjoy crafts and have fun in a calm and quieter environment. We also did this with Wantaw Elementary during their cupcake dance.
Yeah, and it was really successful. All the kids can go to it. It's just amazing. They like, you know, it's loud. Those dances are really loud. So that's all we have. All right, thank you.
I'll just do 612. My duo partner's not here tonight. Last night, we had comedy night. It was a big success, a lot of fun. We want to thank Sharon George for coordinating that event for us. They also hosted the book fair last week on March 10th and 11th. Big success and had a great time. They want to thank Nikki Simon and Joanna Berlou and all the volunteers for their efforts. Umbrellas and keychains, keychain wallets are still on sale on the member hub, so check it out if you want to get ready for April showers. And we are going to be getting ready to head up our spring events, so be on the lookout for the plant sale. Thanks.
Thank you very much. PTA Council, Cindy or Kim? No? Spooch, Spooch, Sports Booster Club, Lisa or Kristen? Nobody? Bandwagon, Brandy? And, oh.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lisa Hilliard. I'm the co-president of Bandwagon. We have an exciting recap from Mr. Avilas. The Wantaw High School Jazz Ensemble participated at the Long Island Jazz Festival last Friday, hosted by Herex High School. Our students had the opportunity to listen to many jazz bands from local high schools and middle schools, and then perform for them. Special guest Camille Thurman, a renowned jazz singer and tenor sax player, worked with all the bands and gave all ensembles feedback on their performance to help make improvements on future performances. Wantaw High School had a remarkable performance and was complimented by Ms. Thurman for their musicality and comprehension of jazz idiom and style. The Jazz Ensemble is looking forward to their concert, an evening of jazz, on April 27th as they take the stage along with the Wantaw High School Vocal Jazz and the Wantaw Middle School Jazz Ensemble. The Wantaw High School Marching Band will be marching this Sunday at the St. Patrick's Day Parade. They have been preparing all week and are very much looking forward to performing. All three Wantaw High School bands, including Concert Band, Symphonic Band, and the Honors Level Wind Ensemble, will be traveling to Hershey Park to participate in Music in the Parks Adjudication Festival. Each band will perform on Friday, February, I'm sorry, Friday, April 28th, and will spend the next day at Hershey Park where there will be an award ceremony. Fun music and chocolate, a winning combination.
Brandy's going to read the rest.
Hi, I'm Brandy Fraser. I'm treasurer of Bandwagon, and I think, based on what we have going on, we may not have anything else to tell you at the next board meeting, but they're really excited. Eric Morales, who is a world-renowned composer, has been commissioned to write a world premiere piece for our very own Wantaw High School Wind Ensemble, and it's written specifically for the band, and they're very excited to be performing this at the spring concert. And he will also be visiting the day before to give them feedback and make tweaks and adjustments. And the band, according to Mr. Avilas, really liked the song, and they're practicing very hard. The other thing that's going to be happening, that's already been announced, is SpongeBob the Musical. They're all prepping and getting ready, and they're performing as the pit orchestra and supporting the music production. And so I know a lot of them that are probably in it. It was probably on in their house, and some of y'all in the room. It may have been on in your homes, SpongeBob. They say it's very funny, and they're looking forward to the opening night on March 31st. And then the other thing that's going to be happening that they're preparing for is the Wind Ensemble will be getting ready for the NISMA Major's Education on May 19th. And it's a Level Six program, and it's considered to be the top level of difficulty in the New York State Manual, and they're very excited about that. And I think that aligns with all of the awards that Mr. Chiffo and the middle school, you know, getting that recognition and also what Wantaw High School is known for. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing you at all of the concerts that are coming up in May.
Okay, and lastly, Drama Club, Kim or Susanna?
Hi, I'm Donna. I'm representing for Kim. So we had Descendants at the middle school a few weeks ago. It was really a great success. The kids did a great job. We had, back in February, we had Sweets and Song, or Songs and Sweet, but it was a fundraiser, and we did really good. It was the first one back since the pandemic, so it was nice to be back together. We have SpongeBob coming up that everybody has been talking about, so I'm not going to go into detail about it, but we do need volunteers to help at the concession stands and fundraising tables. We also need some donations of concessions, so links went out from the 612 via email, so we just hope that everybody can contribute a little bit. That's it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the parent organization representatives coming out tonight and giving us all an update. And lastly, we'll open the microphone to the public. If anyone has anything they would like to present to the board?
Should I just make it taller a little bit? All right. Good evening, Mr. McNamara and members of the Board of Education. My name is Lorenzo Hilliard. I'm a 10th grade student at Wantaw High School. Although I am aware that my parents have spoken about this, I thought it would be important to speak on my own behalf about attending the Bosie's Program, the Long Island High School of the Arts, also known as LISA. I stand before you today as a student and actor, singer, and dancer with a deep passion for the arts and a strong desire to further develop my skills in each of these areas. I've learned so much from my fam, from my teachers at Wantaw High School, and I believe that attending LISA will provide me with an even greater opportunity to grow as a performer. At LISA, I will have the chance to work with experienced professionals, to learn with talented peers, and to challenge myself in new ways. The education and experience I will receive at LISA will be different from anything I've experienced before, and I'm eager to take advantage of this unique opportunity. Attending LISA will not only help me grow as a performer, but it will also provide me with the foundation and skills necessary to succeed in a Bachelor of Fine Arts program for performing arts. I'm determined to continue my education in this field, and I believe that LISA is the best place for me to do so. Being a high honor roll student since 6th grade, I take pride in my academics as well as my art. I believe that by attending LISA, I will further my growth as a singer, dancer, and actor, and to make a positive impact on the world through my art. At LISA, I can also learn new skills in classes that Wantaw simply cannot offer, such as activism and performance, artistic direction and production, songwriting and playwriting. Some of those I just mentioned are core classes every performing arts student must take. Since elementary school, I have actively participated in the arts offered through the Wantaw School District, including chorus, band, fine art, digital art, and Wantaw Theater. I was a part of the cast of all three Wantaw Middle School productions and all of the high school productions since my freshman year. That includes the upcoming SpongeBob Musical. I have also taken Intro to Drama in 8th grade, Foundations of Dramatics in 9th grade, and Advanced Drama in 9th and 10th grade. I'm also into the Intro to Dance class this year. Although I intend to stay in the Wantaw Theater family by performing in after-school productions, I have exhausted all of the performing arts courses available at me, to me, at Wantaw. So I respectfully request your support in allowing me to attend LISA. I understand the value of my education at Wantaw High School, and I am grateful for the support I have received here. However, I believe that by attending LISA, it's an opportunity I simply cannot afford to miss, and I'm excited to make the most of it. The arts have the power to bring people together, to inspire change, and to promote understanding and empathy, and I would like to use my skills to contribute to this positive impact. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Rich. My children attend school in the district. I wanted to speak this evening regarding something that I contacted the board and the superintendent earlier this month. In light of the Project Veritas video involving the East Meadow School District, I questioned the board and the superintendent on whether there was an association with Assistant Superintendent of East Meadow School District, Dr. David Casmento. The response from Superintendent McNamara was, "Thank you for sharing the video. This individual is not associated with the district in any way." I subsequently discovered that Dr. Casmento runs meetings and is the treasurer of NADCO, which stands for Nassau Association District Curriculum Officials. This September, published on their website, our Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Winans, is welcomed and listed as a Nassau CNI official. This seems to me to be an association. Whether it has anything to do with the other stuff that was on that video has yet to be seen, but it is, in fact, an association. Led me to a number of questions. Was, what influence does Dr. Casmento have on our district, if any? What hiring practices does Wantaw have in place for administration? Are those procedures available to the public? Who approves candidates and on what grounds? Have our teachers and our administrators attended ed camps? The footage from these ed camps, if you have not seen it, is beyond disturbing. Suggesting that schools covertly teach an agenda, and I'm going to tone down the language here because there's children, that is inappropriate for children in elementary school is immoral. Suggesting utilizing tenured teachers, who are supposed to be our most trusted educators, to quietly disrupt classrooms and push aggressive and dangerous DEI agendas because they can't be fired, is unconscionable. Any part of the education process that is executed covertly to avoid parents when dealing with minors is completely unacceptable. Former superintendents of East Meadow that called for a complete audit of their district are completely correct. And I quote, "An audit conducted by the school board is necessary, but not sufficient to regain the public trust and ensure that we are not running a school district outside of parental knowledge and consent." I'd like to stress that every school district, every single school district, needs to operate with transparency and with parental knowledge and consent. These are our children and not yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rich.
Good evening. I have some questions. I'm Jeanne DiBiase. Did, I should, I mimic some of hers. Did any faculty member, administrator, or representative of Wantaw attend the ed camp March 4th at Jericho High School? Is there a plan for any faculty member, administrator, or representative of Wantaw to attend the next ed camp? That's April 22nd, between 7:30 and 12:30 at Wheatley School at Old Westbury. It's 11 Beacon Road. And according to Dr. David Casmento from the East Meadow School District, he claims and stated covert diversity, equity, and inc, sorry, inclusion agenda is being pushed in Nassau County public schools. I'd like to know if this is a correct statement. Why is the Assistant Superintendent meeting there allegedly was a discussion on how to quietly and covertly push progressive views in the classroom? Why is this even a topic of, excuse me, why is this even a topic of conversation at any of the school-related meetings? Isn't it the job of the administrators and teachers to teach the fundamentals of math, science, English, and history? Nothing more should be taught to the students outside of those parameters. Isn't it taught in school that no one should say, "Don't tell your mom and dad"? What would it mean if someone said to a child, "Don't tell your mom and dad"? That the person might be doing something bad? That the person might be doing something wrong or immoral? That the person could be doing something sinister since he or she is told not to tell the child, "Don't tell your mom and dad"? So isn't this the same thing the administrators and teachers are doing to allegedly teach quietly, covertly, or insidiously to indoctrinate the students to your ideology? If there is no harm in these teachings, why is it done covertly? The board sits quietly each month, never addressing a single question directly. The board never speaks, even though both Laura and Jennifer ran on a transparency and communication was a priority. A year has gone by and still no transparency and no communication from the board. I would also like for Mr. McNamara to address the questions and concerns of all of the parents here, as well as the board, as other districts do. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else, we'll close our public comment period. Thank you for participating tonight. Lorenzo, thank you for your comments. I've had an opportunity to speak to mom and dad about that, and I appreciate your patience. We are working through our budget, and we will continue to do so, and I'll continue to keep you apprised as we do that. We thank you for all you've been part of here, you know, for the past many years. You've been such a great part of our school and our drama program. So thank you for that, and thank you for your patience. Mrs. Rich?
Thank you for your comments. As far as, you know, the Project Veritas video goes, obviously, we have, when I, I said we have no association with the Assistant Superintendent East Meadow. That's what I meant. We do not, you know, his views obviously represent, you know, his comments there, him. We do not support those in terms of, you know, hiring practices or other things that he commented on. Please know that. We have hiring practices here that we incorporate the community, and we have parents part of that process, staff part of that process. We conduct, you know, committee interviews. We have demonstration lessons for teachers, all those different things, you know, and have a thorough process. I'm happy to outline that for you if you'd like more detail on any of that. As far as ed camps go, ed camps have been around for a long time. They're, they're, they're nothing new. They are kind of known as, for those that aren't familiar with them, as the UN Conference. And they typically take place on Saturdays. They're, you know, hosted at different sites by the organizers of that conference. And when participants show up, they post topics that they'd like to discuss and facilitate a session on, and then people go where they're interested. That's typically how those are structured. You had some questions about specific ed camps. I really can't speak to those. I wasn't at those or part of those. To my knowledge, the specific one that you were referencing this month, we didn't have anybody that participated in, but I wouldn't necessarily know that because people do that on their own time. But nothing that we, people submitted for approval to us, that we sent people to, or that we gave comp time to, or anything like that. But as I said, people attend those voluntarily on their own time. And as far as, I just want to see if, you know, us working covertly with the Assistant Superintendent for East Meadow, we don't work covertly. We, we work with our staff. We work with our community to develop any new curriculum or any new initiatives. Right now, we have an SEL committee at, at the elementary level that's working to develop an SEL curriculum. We have over 100 people participating in that committee, including many people that are community members, as well as staff and administrators. We do that with the community. We have a, an elementary curriculum committee that meets, that has PTA representatives on it that report back to the PTAs where we update on curriculum initiatives. We are, and going to continue to partner with, with our parents and our community to develop new initiatives, and we certainly enjoy that partnership, something that certainly serves us well. And as I said, we'll continue to do so. And as I said, we'll continue to do so. So we appreciate your comments, and, and with that, unless the board has anything else.
I'm just going to address Ms. DiBiase's comment about transparency. As far as me running and promising transparency, I think that we continue to update the community through, you know, all our social media, and as we've advised prior, whenever we receive any kind of communications from a community member to the board and Mr. McNamara, Mr. McNamara always replies on our behalf. It's, we don't take the time to write separate emails, so please know that when you receive a response, it's coming from the board as well. We also just went ahead, we, we spent time finding a, and we just hired a public information officer who's going to be working side by side with us to help us get out more information and to communicate more with you as the community, and that person will be more of a point person for our, any kind of questions that you may have. She will start fielding those types of questions, so, you know, she's just getting up and running. Her name is Kimberly Thompson. Thompson?
Thomas.
Thomas, I'm sorry. And she wasn't able to join us this evening, but I believe she's going to be here at our next meeting, and we are, you know, getting her apprised of, you know, our district and how we run, and she's going to be helping us out a lot too with communication. So I just wanted to let you all know that's, you know, been addressed, and we are, you know, working to make sure that all of our, you know, communication is out there for you.[1784.53]